Committee of the whole meeting of Monday, November 18, 2024. Kirk Tamer, please call the roll.
Bastido.
Here.
Nardini.
Here.
Brennan.
Present.
Herbie, absent. Deuter, absent. Verimas.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Shenko.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Cahill, absent. Toledo.
Here.
Park, absent. Nudera.
Here.
Ten present, four absent.
Ten present, four absent. We have a quorum. Kirk Tamer, has anyone signed up for public comment in the committee of the whole meeting?
No, Mayor.
Is there anyone present who would like to make public comment that did not have the opportunity to sign in? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move into the business before the committee, which is the review of the fiscal year 2025 budget. City manager, do you want to make any comments before we go into the circle back items?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So as we've done in the past, we have put together a comprehensive memo. We hope answering all of the questions or providing information to the circle backs that were asked through the process. We, of course, are here to further answer those. If aldermen have further questions, I have staff behind me as well to help clarify anything.
All right, so I think we'll handle it the same way we have in past years. You should have each received on board docs the list of responses to the circle back items, and we have quite a few of them. I will call out the item. I will read out the title, ask, identify the person who made the circle back request and ask if you feel that the memo has sufficiently answered your question, your request for the circle back, and if not, we will dig into it. So with that, we'll proceed. Item one, circle back on the police station. Should the project be included in the budget or should it be included after the council approves to move forward with the project? Alderman Hill, that was your circle back?
Got the first one. Thank you, Mayor. Yes.
Congratulations.
Yes, so if I may, I think this answered some of my question. However, my question was also sort of predicate on where the Finance Committee might end up with a meeting or two to discuss the issue. So I guess my question is kind of the same as when I first raised a circle back, is asking the Finance Committee what the discussions are like with regards to funding a police station at this time. I understand that there is, either approach is acceptable to include in the budget or to not include in the budget until it's decided, but I'd like to get some more input from the Finance Committee to hear where we are with that, I guess.
Mayor Toledo.
The police department or the police station funding topic is in front of the Finance Committee. I would expect that we'll be bringing that back before the committee in the next meeting or two, pending if staff has the follow-up materials that were requested in the last meeting, which I expect that they will. I will say that the last time that the committee discussed this topic, a member of the committee asked if it was allowable for the Finance Committee to present an alternative funding option as it related to the timing of the police station. And the committee's discussion determined that first and foremost, the committee needs to answer the request of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee, which is if we were to move forward on the current timeline for the police station, how would we fund that? But that it would also be within scope of the Finance Committee to offer an alternative funding mechanism as it relates possibly to timing of building the police station. For example, if bonds might roll off in the future, how that might impact the timing of issuing new bonds, for example, if we were to use that to build the police station. So that was discussed during the committee meeting the last time that we met. I would expect that that conversation would continue, as this committee often does, in a very thorough and responsible way before issuing any kind of recommendation or report back to either the city council or the Public Affairs and Safety Committee. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. I think it is. It sounds like you're exploring, when you say alternate options, you're saying going ahead with proceeding to fund the station, the construction in 2026, or an alternate option where we might do it on a different timeframe?
Possibly. And we're still thoroughly in the committee process, so I can't, I can only report what was discussed, you know, in terms of the consensus or the discussion that happened in the meetings we've had so far. So it is very much still in the committee process, so I wouldn't, I'm reporting what was discussed, I guess, and what I'm saying is I wouldn't preclude other things coming up during the discussion as well. But I would say that we are not limiting ourselves to just answering the first question.
Okay, thank you. And just as a comment on this, where Public Affairs and Safety left off was, we were charged with choosing a station design at this point, so we looked at, of course, four different station options and made a selection based on the options presented to us, I think, sort of predicated on what we would choose if we had to build a station right now. So we made a selection as to the station we would choose if that station were to be built right now. And then, of course, we're waiting for a Finance Committee to deliberate that and for that to come back to us and to finish our report, so there has not been a definitive report written. I could see it going either way, including it in the budget or not. It sounds like, of course, on the circle back, either way is amenable, but I think I will wait for the Finance Committee's report, and I'm happy with leaving it on the budget as is right now.
Unfortunately, you know, things are in process as we do our budget each year, and this is one of them. So if it's in the budget and finance comes back and for some reason they say A or B, whether it's build it in the future, find a different source, we will have to adjust our decision-making based upon what finance presents to the council and what the council chooses to do to move forward. All right, thank you. Item two.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Am I?
Oh, Alderman Bastido, I'm sorry.
It's not my item, but I would like to ask a question. Okay, so the notes talk about the 2025 budget not being impacted, that there's net zero impact because bond proceeds being used. Can you explain that just a little bit more, City Manager? Would we normally be abating those, and now we're not? Or how is that? Because the amount is, I believe it's $3,250,000, is that right?
Right. And so what that means is if we're going to do the project, then we'll take the bonds out. If we're not going to do the project, we won't take the bonds out, therefore it's not an impact.
Issuing new bonds.
Correct. We won't issue the bonds, in which case it would not affect the budget.
But how does issuing bonds? Oh, because taxpayers will be paying for it. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you. I was also going to comment on the response from the circle back item as well. I know it doesn't make a difference of having it in the budget either way. I know there has been, and this is ironic, that we had the great video presented by the chief of the status of the police station tonight as well. I'm just sitting on the fence here in regards to if it doesn't impact, which because it's geo-bond funded, it doesn't impact the overall budget, and it seems like there's still more work to be done by not only the Finance Committee, but I think other committees as well, then wouldn't it be a good message to send to the public, I guess, to not have it in the budget and shift it out a year? What is the pros and cons of doing it that way versus having it in the budget?
Well, there was plenty of discussion at the Public Affairs and Safety Committee regarding construction costs and escalation, and of course, Public Works Committee's had many of those discussions as we've gone through projects. And the Finance Committee has brought up a great point about looking at future bond rates to see, would that help us? So I think part of what Finance Committee needs to look at is kind of weighing those two against each other. And I would, I would just end with, if we don't have it in the budget, we definitely can't move forward with it. If we do have it in the budget but choose not to fund it this year through a bond issue, then it's no impact to the budget.
And we're trying, Alderman Brennan.
So to just piggyback on your comment, City Manager, you know, we have to do something, right? So any options, money. And so therefore, every year that we do nothing, it's going to be more costly to do whatever it is that we decide to do as a council. So I'm a proponent for leaving it in the budget and have the flexibility to go through the process and get the required information back to P A and S so we can put forward a recommendation to the council.
And part of that funding is to do the design, correct?
Correct.
So until we know what the design is, we would not be able to figure out exactly how much we need nor would be able to source out possible grant funds, although the way things are going recently, I'm not sure that they'll be available, but it's been a concern.
Alderman Bram.
A follow-up to that, I mean, essentially, if we do the design, it's kind of like the chicken and the egg. If we do the design, we're spending good dollars and we're not going to throw those away, and we're saying, in my view at least, we're saying we're moving forward with it. That's why, I know it's a difficult situation, but that's why I'm just on the fence in regards to do we move forward or what is being proposed in the budget is that we move forward with possibly the design. I don't know what percentage of those $3.2 million is part for the design, but like I said, if we do the design, more than likely, we're going forward. And, you know, I know the Finance Committee has done a great job with debating how we're going to finance or if we move forward, how we're going to finance the police station, but I'd rather have that ironed out prior to moving forward and even seeing it in the budget.
Well, I think for one question, I think the design is about $3.2 million. So that is what it's for.
Alderman Brennan.
So the way I look at this is $3.2 million is probably the worst-case scenario, you know, and it would cover any of the options that we're looking at. Not having it in the budget assumes that we're not going to do anything in 2025, which it just is going to make the cost of anything even that much more. So once it comes out of committee, we're going to propose, you know, one of three options, the video covered that, and I'm comfortable that, you know, what we have in the budget today covers, you know, those scenarios. And maybe we don't spend $3.2 million because of the option that we propose. But regardless, we need to do something next year to get something to where, as a city, we're in a better position for a shovel-ready project. So not having it in the budget is, you know, basically not doing anything this next year means that we're just kicking the can down the road, and it's going to cost us more money.
Alderman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it should stay in the budget personally. I don't know what our committee is going to end up recommending or what the council's going to end up approving, but ultimately, if we have it in the budget and it's decided for whatever reason we're not doing it next year, the year after, whatever, then we just don't spend that money, don't issue those bonds. It gives us a free option in our pocket to have where, you know, if we strike it from the budget now, then that's an option we're giving up that we don't have to. We don't have to make a decision tonight about whether we're going to do it, but we can make a decision next March or May or whenever, going through the standard committee process. So why tie our hands now when it doesn't need to be tied?
This project has been, I was chair of P A S when we started it, and it's been deferred for a number of reasons. The biggest one was probably the pandemic. If we would have gotten it off the ground, as has been said by others this evening about the escalation of costs, it would have been a whole lot less. But from my personal perspective and as a member of this committee, I am very strongly in favor of getting something moving forward. We talk about taking care of our police officers. I visited other police stations. I will, I hope to show you some other videos of what a modern police department looks like. Ours is woefully inadequate in terms of what it exists in size, and I feel that we ought to have something in the budget, whatever the decision of the council is, that we are prepared to move forward.
Other discussion? All right. I'm going to turn the page. All right. Item two, fire. This is Alderman Toledo, provide a review of the fire vehicle replacement schedule and compare the schedule to historical schedules. Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. So since this topic, there's been a couple of conversations. I've done a little bit of research, and I actually want to use this circle back as a springboard to broaden the scope of Elmhurst and its vehicle fleet planning process outside of just the fire department. Alderman Brennan and I have drafted a referral. We'll be submitting it to the City Manager that will ask a committee to look into alternative financing methods for the City of Elmhurst vehicle fleet planning process and appropriation process as a, holistically, across all departments. I know Director Coyle mentioned during one of the prior meetings, something called an internal service fund. I've also found things called a fleet replacement fund, but the intention would be to plan the vehicle purchases across all departments in a holistic way, more formally, I think, you know, City Manager, I think you do some of that with your department heads. I'd like to see if there's benefit to looking at it more holistically through a process that would smooth those expenditures out from year to year more than we see currently. So I don't have any further questions on the circle back item and the information presented, but I did want to share with the council and with city staff our intention on that referral. Thank you.
Alderman Toledo, other discussion? Okay. Item three, Alderman Brennan, please provide an analysis of the roadway improvements line item, which includes 2024 budget, 2024 estimated, and 2025 budget. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you for the detail. Makes a lot of sense. I guess, just in general, the contract paving, just to follow up on that. So we had, you know, $3.9 million budgeted. We spent roughly $3.3 million on that particular line item, and this next year, we're proposing, you know, roughly $600,000 incremental to 2024. The way we do this, is that basically just sort of those dollars are carrying over to next year that we didn't spend?
No, so that is not carrying over. So the reason that the 2024 estimated was lower than the budget is because we were over budgeted in 2023 by about $300,000. So the decision was made for the 2024 program. That payment, although it was for 2023, was paid in 2024 on a cash basis. So the decision was made because the 2023 program was so over budget by about $300,000. That's why the 2024 program was reduced to basically align those two programs to kind of meet the total spend for those two years. The 2025 budget amount was increased just based off of the material prices that we need to be able to accomplish the program.
So going over a little bit in 2023, is it a cheaper unit price, right? So, okay, makes sense. Thank you. I have no further questions.
All right, anyone else? All right. Item four, Alderman Bram, please provide an analysis/distribution of maintenance and roadway dollars between asphalt and concrete streets and explain why any increases may not be parallel or equal between the two. Alderman Bram.
Yes, excuse me, thank you. As I've spoke to in past years, I have been evaluating and taking a look at the residential concrete streets versus the asphalt. For probably about a decade, we've had some discussions on this topic, on how to fairly distribute funds and make sure that all streets throughout town see their proper repair and From the proposal of the current budget, it's recommending five, going from $540,000 to $621,000, so approximately a 15% increase, but that 15% increase is over three years. So there hasn't been any funding for the residential concrete streets for the last two years, so we're going back to, what was it, 2022, when any funding and therefore expenditures happened on concrete streets. Where in comparison, the dollars that are allocated here for the residential asphalt streets have occurred year to year at anywhere from, well, there was one year that it was flat budgeted funding, but overall, anywhere from 14.4%, which is the proposal for this budget light item this year, to all the way back in 2020, the budgeted increase was 20, I believe it was, or maybe it was 2021, I don't know, but 30%. So the increases year to year have been significant, in my view at least, for the asphalt streets and have not seen the same maintenance for the concrete streets to receive that maintenance of asphalt overlay. I do understand, as the memo pointed out, that it, the percentage of asphalt streets versus concrete streets, concrete streets is a lot less throughout the city, but I also have seen a two-year delay of no budgeted items and an increase over a three-year span of 15% versus a year-to-year of 14.4%, one being flat, and then 19.7%, 10%, et cetera. For asphalt streets, seems to me that I would like to see more of a level set, and I'm not even requesting a catch-up here, but, which would be nice, but an increase year over year of, instead of 621,000, an increase to 822,000. So at this time.
I'm sorry, oh, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to increase the budget line item, and this is a little tricky because it is combined with multiple other projects, but it is on the KEB page for those of you who are interested on KEB 29. The account number is 110-6061-570140, and the request is an increase from, make a motion to amend the increase from, or the current from 621,000 to 822,000.
822?
822. And what that represents, for explanation, is a 15% increase year to year for the concrete streets if it was budgeted each of these past two years. So it's not showing, it's not even asking for a catch-up, it's just level setting on what would have been an increase year to year over the last three years.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Jensen. Discussion. Alderman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. Last year, during this discussion, I made a request of city staff to just make sure it's in the budget this year, and I appreciate that you did do that. The reason I second this motion is, in the last couple of years, with the construction on 294, there's been a lot of semi-trucks driving down, particularly Emroy to Lake to Michigan to Crestview, and one of those streets, Michigan, is a concrete street that's, you know, it's struggling to support residents both driving and walking on it, which let's not lose sight of the fact that the streets up there are the sidewalks as well. So where ordinarily a street might be in decent repair for a vehicle, it might not be in decent repair for a pedestrian or cyclist. So, you know, I second the motion, like, to see if there's a way we can get a little more funding for that stretch due to the increased load on the street there.
So Alderman Jensen, are you talking about one, are you speaking in support of the $200,000 increase?
I'm speaking in support of $200,000, $200,000, and my justification for why I can support that this time around.
All right, additional discussion. Alderman Toledo.
I guess anytime there is a request for an increase, there should be a commensurate solve for that increase in the budget. So what would you propose, cutting?
Alderman Bram.
I believe that question was intended for me and not for staff, so I'll respond. There's been projects over time that have been added to the budget that had no funding, and there was no request to see where that, those funds came from. There's also a project that I asked for a circle back that is currently ongoing that we'll be talking about later this evening, that has seen an increase of, I think it was $700,000, but there was no request from any other elected official to question why we are continuing putting that in the budget with that significant of an increase for capital dollars. So I don't have an answer of exactly where. There's some projects I would make a motion to cancel or remove from the budget. I don't feel like that is justified, to justify something that hasn't been funded for a couple of years, and the request is only to equate to what the funding would be if we see similar increases year to year in the budget for concrete street resurfacing versus asphalt street resurfacing. I think it's an appropriate request, and if this, these type of questions are raised continuously, then I would ask the same questions on the various projects that are in here that have seen increases or have been added with no justification of what else was removed to be able to add that new project.
All right. Alderman Bastido.
So I can see both sides of this, so I just, that's why I wanted to ask a couple more questions. So Alderman Bram, because I think if I'm reading this correctly, that concrete, residential concrete streets accounts for 4%. Well, how many, what percentage of our streets in Elmhurst are actually residential concrete streets? Because I'm asking that because it does appear that residential concrete streets are getting more than their percentage of funding. Is that right?
I would defer to staff.
Okay, yes.
City Manager.
The circle back memo in the page four, the second paragraph under the first table, about midway through, says residential concrete streets account for 4% of the 10%, 10.7% of total concrete streets. So 10%. Who can do the math? 4%.
No pressure. But the 10% is concrete streets.
Citywide, both residential and industrial.
And industrial, okay.
Yeah.
Right. So that's why I'm asking. I understand that, I'm saying I see both sides of this because I know that there were a couple of years where they didn't get the funding, but aren't they getting more than their percentage of funding now? Now that we're back up to the regular spend?
I could say that, in my view, I would say no to that, right? We're, we're pretty much doing one increase over a three-year time period that asphalt streets have seen, and the asphalt street number, and Finance Director can correct me if I'm wrong, but this 4.5 million does not include all the other projects like Alma and the other ones, or does that include Alma, Villa Park, et cetera?
It does not include those projects which are in the motorfield tax fund.
So with that, I would say that you're not really looking at a dollar-to-dollar comparison by looking at these numbers only, because you're having other, I will call them special projects, I don't know what to call them, but other projects that aren't included in the resurfacing number, albeit getting resurfaced because it's total reconstruction, like Cayuga and Villa Avenue and Alma, I believe, are some of the ones that come to top of mind. So that dollar amount, the 4.5 what is proposed, to me, is not as high as it should be because other streets are seeing significant improvements as well. Excuse me.
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. So question to staff, so in past years, if I recollect the process, I mean, on an annual basis, isn't there sort of a assessment of the streets and prioritizing where these funds need to go?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. So based on that, given the fact that we have 89% of our streets are asphalt, it's not not alarming to me that we, you know, a good portion of our dollars are being spent here for asphalt streets. If we have problems with, with concrete streets, I guess, you know, this budgeted number of 621, given the fact that residential streets is 4% of that number, you know, I guess I'm going to yield it to staff and the analysis that they, you know, are leveraging with, with all the technology, et cetera, you know, to repair the streets where it's appropriate to repair them based on a priority basis. If we let streets go beyond a certain point, then it's a, it's a problem because it's a bigger project. So there's a lot that goes into this. And, you know, I don't think it's as, as simple as looking at linear miles and, you know, the ratios. I think there's an algorithm behind this that I support. So that's my comment.
All right. From, from my perspective, we addressed this last year. And I personally spent a lot of time digging through all the reports that were produced to support the request for an increased concrete budget. And what's the, Ken, what's the lifespan of a concrete street?
Somewhere between 15 and 100 years, depending on the conditions.
And the asphalt street?
We try to maintain 18 to 20 years, roughly.
All right. So we covered all these statistics last year. We covered the fact that, as Alderman Brennan laid out, the city staff has a professional analysis of what streets need to be replaced when. There's, I see no justification, say, well, I just want to catch up, I want to spend more, when it doesn't look at what streets need to be replaced and what streets are deficient, just because it hasn't been there in years before. We kind of went through that last year. So we're this year looking at, like, does this budget meet what staff has recommended in terms of repairing the streets that need to be repaired based upon the schedule which they objectively develop? Even the street that is pointed out is they might need more repair because of the 290 construction, then the remedy is to identify particular streets that might have caused, have caused additional deterioration because of what happened and move those up in the ranking, not to sort of say we're going to increase the budget by 30% just because it hasn't been done in past years. To me, that's not responsible budgeting. Alderman Bram.
Thank you, and I appreciate those comments, Mr. Mayor. As you may recollect, there was analysis, there was done by city staff, and there was a plan in place, presented by city staff and approved by council back in 2014. That plan passed council. That plan was a 12-year program to resurface these concrete streets. That plan was supposed to be from 2015 to 2026, as you may recollect. That plan got delayed almost immediately by one year. In 2016, when Van Aken and Crestview didn't receive any STP funding, they were added to this plan, which extended the plan a year. I won't go through all the delays, but what's being presented once again today is this plan that was presented by staff, approved by council, was supposed to end and have all the streets in this area resurfaced by 2026. What is being said today, that if we keep the funding as is, that it will be delayed six years on a 12-year plan. So albeit whatever's done year to year, I respect that and I respect staff, as I always have. But I also respect on what has, the analysis that was done, what council at that time did approve. And we are, in my estimation, not even close to following a plan that was put in place at that time. For the last couple of years, there was absolutely no funding. This is an area of town that has, as Alderman Jensen said, no sidewalks. So not only are you risking from a vehicular perspective, but in regards to pedestrians and bicyclists. I myself have had an accident due to a large pothole on these concrete streets, and Alderman, or Alderman, City Manager Grabowski knows what I'm talking about, where I took a spill on my motorcycle due to a large hole in the street. These streets are in disrepair, and staff did agree. Now, do they agree to date versus in 2014, 2015? I will not be putting them on the spot tonight. But I will say that the city council did agree to staff's assessment at that time. And I am just trying to make sure that we follow the plan that was originally put in place because we are significantly behind schedule per that plan. I'm not asking for much here. I'm asking for an increase that would have been done if it saw funding every year at a 15% increase, just like asphalt streets have seen. I'm not asking even for catch-up dollars. I'm asking for what is basic to maintain some level of maintenance that I feel is needed within the concrete street area. When the plan was put in place, everybody said, the sooner we can get this done, the sooner than all streets are treated equal and they're all in one bucket. That's what I'm looking forward to.
Last year, we spent about an hour going through, and I read your 2014 report, the 2014 report, and I think it was kind of debunked, is like, that's what it looked like in 2014, but needs change. And this is 2024 going into 2025. And staff has presented what we need in this year to address the streets on an as-needed basis. So instead of looking at a report from 11 years ago, we can look at what the data is that our staff has shown to be needed for going forward. And I mean, I'd be very disappointed if staff isn't looking at, you know, the condition of streets. I can point to a ton of asphalt streets that need repair too. I'm not saying there aren't any concrete streets, but that's part of the regular replacement program we go through.
Your motion, Pence, go ahead.
I can only go from the information that I have read. The report at the time, I don't think was debunked. I don't think it's debunked at all. For many years, I waved the, the report around that was done back in that time. And at that time, however many years, I don't remember when the report was written, but a two, three-inch document that showed many of the streets need to be resurfaced. The streets are 55-plus years old. We're not even talking about total reconstruction, that in some cases, I don't know, I'm not going to defer to city staff, but is needed probably relatively soon. Some of the streets that were just resurfaced had to have patches done on them this past year, for whatever reason, that the foundation was failing, I don't know the reason for it. But the streets that were just resurfaced needed some additional patches. So in all due respect, Mr. Mayor, I think that the reports that were passed, that there was a plan put in place, that we should try to achieve that plan. Otherwise, what are we doing here, creating plans and procedures if we're not going to even attempt to follow them?
I have a question for staff. Is the 2014 plan our current plan?
It's changed for the concrete streets. So that was the plan that we put together for basically the northeast part of town with concrete streets. And Kent just commented that we've revised it as other streets and other priorities, other failures of other areas have come up. So yes, it is, but as I think a number of points that have been made tonight, that is subject to change depending on conditions and the limit on funding that we have.
Others?
Alderman Toledo.
Alderman Toledo.
With all due respect, I'd like to call the question. Thank you.
All right. We're voting on, I don't know if we have to vote on that. Is there anyone that had, well, I will follow procedure.
Give me a second.
I'm looking. You have a second? I'll do a second. Alderman Brennan with a second. We're voting on calling the question. That means we're voting to terminate further discussion on this topic. So an I vote would be no more discussion, and a no vote would be let the discussion go on. Is everyone clear? All right. All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right. I think I could fairly call, the question has been called. We are going to vote on the amendment. Alderman Bram, if I may state it, you may correct me. I didn't have the exact line item. Do you have it there?
Sure.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yes. I thought I memorized that. Okay. To increase that line item from 621,000 to 822,000. I'm sorry, it's to increase it actually from 540,000.
No, 621. You had it right.
Well, the reason why I raised my hand was because the line item itself, right, on page 254, 2-54, is entirety roadway improvements.
So the reason why it's not that easy, that even though the KEB is that number, as you stated, that the proposed amount is 5421, 400, right? Right?
Pardon? Yeah, the account is right. I think where you're headed is with the intent of that 201,000 to be used for concrete streets.
To increase from that number.
Streets, as pointed out on page four of the circle back memo, the way it has it broken out, to increase the 621 to the 822 to be used for concrete streets.
Correct. All right. So are we in sync then? We're increasing essentially the concrete budget by $201,000. Is that correct? Correct. All right. All right. I'm going to ask City Manager to call the roll.
Vostito.
No.
Nardini.
No.
Brennan.
No.
Erby absent. Deuter absent. Veremis.
No.
Hill.
No.
Shenko.
No.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill absent. Toledo.
No.
Park absent. Nudera.
No.
That is two aye, eight nay, four absent.
Two aye, eight nays, four absent. The motion fails. All right. Thank you. Is there anything else on item four? All right. We'll move on to item five. Thank you for, all for your discussion. This is a Toledo City Treasurer request to provide an analysis and comparison of the MFT reallocation. I'm not sure if...
All good.
All good? All right. Anyone else? Alderman Toledo.
I would just say that I think five and 11 were basically the same. They related to the explanation for the MFT, and we have had ample explanation of that shift, so I don't need anything on five or 11. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Toledo. We'll go on to item six. Alderman Hill, provide information on the railroad interconnect projects. Alderman Hill?
Thank you.
That's good. All right. Anyone else on item six? Item seven, Alderman Bram, circle back request on the bike pedestrian plan.
Yes, thank you. I was trying to look up the differential, and maybe Director of Finance couldn't help me on this. What I was looking to get was what I thought was a significant increase in the overall costs of the bike pedestrian plan, and to understand why there is such a significant increase. I believe the funding being requested from the city of Elmhurst, from a capital improvement perspective at least, went from 700 to over a million dollars. Let me see here. The overall project increased about 26%, and I believe our request from our capital improvement project, an example of an increase, increased significantly over the year.
Is there a particular page you're on, Alderman?
On this budget is KEB 50.
Thank you.
I don't recall what the dollar amount was last year. But I think the overall funding request increased.
Your microphone, Alderman. I actually looked this information up previously. This, this capital project, the total amounts of this project has not changed in our KEB since 2022. I was almost concerned about the opposite thing you were concerned about, shouldn't this project cost more money than it did in 22? But the engineering costs in 22 were 147,000. Here they're 158. And construction was 733 in 22, and it's 727 here.
Oh. My apologies. I thought my request was about the Route 83 pedestrian bridge. This response is for the bike and ped plan, so I have no other questions on this item. I was referring to the pedestrian bridge.
Do you want to circle back on that?
No, it's okay.
All right. All right. We'll move on to item eight. Alderman Jensen, provide a review of the banking services line item.
It's all good. Thanks.
All good. All right. Anyone else? Alderman, number nine. Alderman Deuter, provide an update regarding lead line replacement, including current laws, number of lead lines, lead line replacement plan, any cost-sharing programs. Did Alderman Deuter contact you on anything?
She did not.
All right. Anyone else have any questions? All right. 10, History Museum, Alderman Toledo, provide attendance at events and exhibits. Alderman Toledo. Good? All right. Anyone else? Item 11, Alderman Toledo, request a circle back on the property tax levy increase for Social Security, VICA, IMRF. Also provide the increase to the levy if the MFT shift was not included in the property tax levy. Lastly, please suggest addition, well, actually, is this the one you said we don't need? I don't know why I'm reading it. All right. Item 12, Alderman Jensen, please compare the levy increase percentage from 2019 to current to CPI for the same period.
It's all good. Redundant.
Good. All right. Anyone else? Good question. Thank you. Item 13, Alderman Jensen, provide a list of priority C and D projects in the general fund. Alderman Jensen?
All good. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Item 14 was Alderman Erby, requesting estimated lane miles for 2024 and the budget lane miles for 2025. We're trying attachment D. Anyone have questions on that? Alderman Nardini.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I go back briefly to 12, the CPI increase over the years?
You may.
I want to make sure that I understand that the levy that has grown 11% over the time that the CPI has grown 22%.
That's as Alderman Toledo featured in her remarks in presenting the report on the levy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Item 15, what is the average cost per plant, planning case? Does anyone have any questions on that? Item 16, Alderman Erby, what is the annual number of building permits? What is the average cost per permit? Does anyone have any questions on this item? Item 17 is Alderman Brennan, please provide the miles on the vehicles being replaced in 2025 through 2027. Alderman Brennan?
Very good. Thanks for the detail.
All right. I understand you have a referral that may address that. 1811, please address the difference between 2022, 23, actual elected salaries versus the 2024 and 2025 budget amounts. The discrepancy has been explained to me. Any questions? Big item there. All right. Item 19, Alderman Bram, for account 530110, please explain the reason for the increase in cost. Alderman Bram?
No other questions.
Thank you. Item 20, Alderman Erby... Item 20, Alderman Erby, please provide the data analytics for our social media accounts and websites. Any questions on item 20 beyond the explanation? 21, Alderman Hill, for account 530295, please provide an explanation of why the costs in this account are increasing. Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually do have some questions about this one. So, I understand the costs are down budget-wise. It's budgeted for 225K in 2025, but I've been looking back at past budgets, and this line has increased dramatically since the last number I could find for it. The last actual budget amount I could find was budgeted for 60K in 2018. And again, I'll just refer, this is public information.
Excuse me, Alderman Hill, just, if you're on a page, just tell us where...
Yeah, I'm going to thank you. Sorry about that. Yeah, I should provide my references. This is page 222, under Services Line Item 530295, Public Information. And what I've seen is this account grow very quickly, very significantly, since the 60K that was budgeted in 2018. The first significant increase, it was fairly slow until 2023, when the budget was jumped from 80,000 to 201,900, which I believe was at the time we talked about Explore Elmhurst and kicking off that campaign as part of the cost. Now, we didn't spend the budget amount. Our actuals were about half, a little less than half that, actually. But we continued to increase the budget amount. This year it was 255,000. And I looked at the explanation of the budget for this, and I don't see wages in there. So, I'm just, I'm just a little confused as to why these costs have gone up so markedly, and they're going to be sustained at this point. I understand we're rolling out Explorer Elmhurst as a new program, but are we sustaining a new rollout for several years? Or what's, where does this rapid expense, I mean, increase come from?
I'll start. And so, part of the strategic plan was reaching out and getting communication to the residents in all kinds of different ways, and to increase that, to bring awareness of what's happening in the city. And so, our communications director has done that. She has proposed new programs, which I know Kent can detail. And so, that's, that's basically the increase. And so, I'll kind of turn it over to Kent to go through a few of those. And I think Cassandra's here behind me as well, and she can maybe add some color if we need it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to add some highlights, if we look at page 222, the actual spent in 22 for this line item was about 140,000. The next year in 23 was about 78,000. And then the estimated in 24, I think we talked about this at the budget presentation for this department, says 255, but we are only at about 140 spent year-to-date so far. So, I just wanted to note that for the council members. This particular line item does include, as you see in...
Oh, sorry, this is city manager. So, the, the estimated amount you're saying at 255 for this year is actually what so far?
So far, we're about $140,000 spent. So, that 255, most estimated numbers we provided to finance several months ago. And so, there were certain things we didn't know at that time if we were going to get done in the last quarter of the year. So, that, that budget amount will come in significantly under what we're, what we have budgeted this year. As I was saying, the circle back memo 22 on page 11 does highlight all the items in this account. There were a few things that we wanted to do in 24 that we do not expect to, to carry over year by year after this. So, to answer your question, I think that number will settle somewhere around that 225 moving forward. There are things, again on the bottom of page 11, that you can see, like promotional campaigns. That's a placeholder for $40,000, depending on what the city wants to do. If we really want to target certain projects we're doing, or certain things that the strategic plan may, may highlight. And so, this year, I don't think we've used a lot of that. So, I'd be happy to go through any of the individual line items, but as city manager said, this department has grown. And as they grow and social media grows, and the way we reach our resident expands, this is an expected additional expense.
So, I understand the expense, you know, the need, I should say, I understand the need to increase our outreach to the public, and I understand the value of bringing on additional services and programs that are allowed to promote to the public. I just, help me understand why it's grown by almost, it's, it's quadrupled, I guess. I mean, is that what we need to... I'm looking at the budget here, and, and just, you know, three years ago, we were looking at 70K as a budget for this, and now we're talking about three times that. And I think for that amount, I, I'm not sure if I felt it as a resident to see I'm getting three times the amount of outreach, or connection, or promotion there. So, I'm just, I'm feeling a little bit of disconnect with this rapid increase here.
Let me add, we had our, I think it was 2021, we had our planning session, and we came up with our priorities. And one of the main goals was increasing communication. And so, we called for more to be done. I reflect back when I was acting mayor in 2013, and we had the great Morley flood. And we were in the basement of the fire station, the command center, and I said, "Well, we've got to put out some press on this." And we didn't really, we didn't have a public information officer. So, I was writing stuff. City manager was writing with me, and I said, "We, we need to do a robo-call to let people know what's going on." And we had to contact a former mayor who had a business that would, could do a robo-call. So, we've come a long way. It's one of the things that I feel, I hear from residents, and it kind of surprises me that we don't, there's not enough communication. And we've made market strides in trying to increase communication. I've seen some people make their, make statements for, when they run for alderman. "I will increase communication." So, I mean, communication's a big deal. Yes, and I'm not explaining it line by line, but I think we identified a priority of getting communication out in the, in the, in the modern era. People aren't reading newspapers as much. We, I remember there was a time we had four newspapers. We kind of have one now. So, these are, in my opinion, they're effective tools to help us do different outreaches. I know that we have, and I don't know if it's part of this budget, but we just announced a program where we're distributing signs to remind residents of the need to slow down on our residential streets. And that's the kind of campaign where we need some money to communicate that. That's the kind of complaint that we all hear. So, here, this is where the funds come to do that. So, I understand what you're saying. I, you know, I'm only going back to 2022. It's not really that big of a change. We're doing a whole lot more, and a lot more is being called upon us. But that's my own perspective. I'll turn it back to anyone else.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I would call attention to attachment F in the packet, which was the monthly communications update from October of 2024. I think there's a lot of great points in there as to what Cassandra and her team have been doing. And I would say we've, as we've increased, as we've wanted to increase the communication, we've also increased the programs that we've been doing in the police department, in the fire department, in the public works department. And those, of course, all need efforts behind them to get them out to the public. And so, that, I, I can't today tie a dollar amount directly to each one. We can get that for you, and maybe even talk about it in committee, if you'd like to break it down. But I feel that the amount in this budget and the, the plans that this department have made for getting the word out has really helped us in our communications. Following, as part of attachment F, are all the outreach for October of 2024, and a program that we have that tracks all of the times that Elmhurst was mentioned, whether it's on the regular news, the radio, social media. That's a program that we pay for now that helps track those kind of things, so we know when those type of things hit.
Thank you, city manager. I think I would be more understanding if I could see some of those costs reflected in wages. I just don't see, and I'm not going to argue against public information, because obviously, who would argue against keeping an informed public and, you know, spending money and time and efforts to inform the public? I'm not saying I have any questions about that. I just, when I see something that's had such a remarkable change in four years, and, you know, to be frank, I'm not feeling four times engaged. I'm not saying that I have to feel four times engaged, or as informed, but I, I just don't know if I see that. I, I appreciate this information here in attachment F, and I'll look at it more closely. Some of it seems like a snapshot in time, where some of it actually is compared back to previous data, so I appreciate that. But I will say, I, I just don't think that budget is... That kind of increase, I would be unhappy to see that happen elsewhere. I guess I'm not going to recommend a motion to change it, but it does seem like an awful lot devoted to one budget line in a very short amount of time. So, I guess I just have an issue with it. I'm not going to try to change it. I just will be keeping an eye on it. So, thank you.
All right. And just for the record, it's a decrease over last year.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Alderman Bram?
Thank you. The, the information that was received was great. I just have one question on it, which was kind of a surprise to me in regards to the Explore Elmhurst program. I saw a $60,000 budgeted item for an influencer campaign. Are we, I guess, what do we feel that a return on investment will be from that? And any thoughts or further details on hiring, or potentially hiring, an influencer for Explore Elmhurst?
That is not my expertise. I'm sure that doesn't surprise anybody up here. So, we're going to ask Cassandra Schreff to come up and explain the benefits of having that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, that $60,000 is reserved for, let's say, WGN calls, and says that they have a program that they'd like to, like to cover in Elmhurst, but there's a dollar amount that's tied to it. Also, there are many social media influencers. This is a very trend, trend-setting thing to do for them to come to cities and talk about different, different things, and that ties with Explore Elmhurst. So, that 60,000 is not, we don't have that exact amount, you know. It's a placeholder for opportunities as they come.
Have other communities used an influencer for marketing their downtown area?
Yes.
And do we happen to know their results? I, I would assume very positive if we're considering it.
Yes, that's all metro ball.
Thank you.
You know, it's, it's interesting that I was saying we had four newspapers. I read the Tribune, you know, every day, and I see stories about every other town. And the reason is the Tribune has laid off so many reporters, and they, they have, like, the North Suburbs have Pioneer Press, the Daily South Town Economist, The Doings, they all feed into the Tribune, and we don't have a paper that feeds in. So, it's, it's, if you ever think about it or read the news, it's, unless it's something really big, there's really, maybe that's good. I don't know. But we, we don't get a whole lot of media coverage, and we have only one paper. So, I feel like we need to keep up and, you know, help promote our community and keep getting the positive message out. Just a thought.
Alderman Veremis?
Quick question. I'm looking...
Microphone, please.
Sorry. I'm looking at, what is this, attachment F when I scroll down? Thank you for asking about the influencer program. I had a similar question, so you answered that. Thank you. Did you also, communications department post about the golden retriever that went missing?
In conjunction with the police department.
Just asking. Thank you.
We have a golden retriever line in...
Yep.
All right. Additional discussion on this item? Hold on, I have lost my place here.
22.
23?
22.
I think we just did 22. All right. Anyone else on 22?
Yes, thank you. We were on 21. 22 is a very similar topic, but I just wanted to ask a couple clarifications. From the, is Elm Connect and Elm Alerts part of this budget?
So, I know that we are in the process of transitioning on the Elmhurst Alerts to a new system, or, excuse me, Elmhurst Connect. That's part of your IT budget?
No, no, no. Red, uh...
Red Alert?
Red Alert is gone. Elmhurst Alerts is the new one, no?
That's correct. Elmhurst Alerts, and that's in the IT budget.
So, it's not, I was hoping to sort of preemptively answer Alderman Hill's question that from a budget of 60-ish thousand dollars five or six years ago to 200,000, that Elmhurst Alerts was one of those increases. Then, I guess I do want to belabor the, what are the changes over the last, this is a little bit of money, and if the presentation that we just saw about the police station is any indication, we have a, a tight comms team. But I would like to, there are a bunch of placeholders. What are the things that we are actually spending that got us to 140 of our 255? Question number one. And if we are only at 140 from a 255 budget, why do we have that pack? Why do we have that room?
Communications Manager Schreff just informed me, one of the big jumps between 22 and 23 and 24, and the proposed 25, are those $40,000 for promotional campaigns, and then the 60 for paid media and influencers. So, that $100,000 is the vast majority of that, that jump, that increase that we're discussing right now. Again, those are placeholders for things we may want to do, depending on what's going on in our community. So, hopefully that answers a question of that, that jump.
Thank you. And, so, I'm a junkie on Facebook, but not on really any other social media. Would we be actually, I mean, is that a, are we TikToking? I mean, who, where would an influencer to the tune of 60 grand a year be, be?
I don't think, well...
I'm sorry. So, that really depends. I mean, it, it could be anything...
Or is it paid media? I mean...
It's paid media. That's basically the umbrella over it. So, for example...
Well, there's WGN, and there's influencers.
Right, right. For example, a large news came to us this past year and said, you know, "We, we want to be in Elmhurst for a day, and it's going to cost this amount of money." Well, we didn't have that budgeted. So, that's the type of thing that we're looking for.
It's kind of surprising you see these, where they come out and feature us, and we're going to pay for it.
Yeah, we do pay for it.
Alderman Hill, then Alderman Bastido.
I think, thank you, Mayor, part of the confusion is, you know, when I look at it broken down like this, I guess I'm a little confused with, like, what is public information versus promotion? Promotional material, promotional, professional photography, promotional materials, promotional campaigns, are those under the umbrella of public information? Are they just maybe not, like, when I think of public, public information, I think of mailings, front porch, things that go out to the public to keep them abreast of events and going-ons in the city. So, the promotion, maybe that's the word I'm falling apart on.
This is communications and marketing is the line item.
But it's, no, it's the same line item as before. It's a...
We, we used communications, I'm sorry to interrupt, we used communications and marketing as the, the division or the, the area where it's used. It is under public information, which has probably been that title for a couple decades in this budget. And so, often, we find those categories which best aligns with what we're trying to do. And occasionally, we do change them, not very often, because that raises a lot of questions. Why'd you change that name? So, that's the, the category that we thought it fit best in.
Okay.
So, I wouldn't take this as specifically like just press releases out to the public or something like that. It can contain a number of different activities.
Okay. That helps. Thank you.
Alderman Bastido?
I just wanted to add on to what Cassandra said about the influencers, because I think a lot of people don't realize when they see either content on X, Instagram reels... a lot of people don't realize when they see either content on X, Instagram, Reels, TikTok, that it looks like, you know, some really nice friendly guy just stumbled into the Western suburbs and discovered this, you know, cute downtown and these restaurants. That's all been paid for. So, a lot of the content you're seeing might actually be something that people have paid for, not just random. And as fewer and fewer people are getting their news from traditional television and news shows, and getting it more and more from social media, I do think it's good that we're setting that money aside. So, in case maybe you weren't even aware, you were seeing content that people have paid for.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. So, first off, I'm very impressed that Alderman Nardini understands TikTok or got the term right. I think what would be helpful over the, you know, upcoming years, years, is just understanding where we're spending in this very changing world and how we communicate and how we get attention. You know, if we spend $3,000 or $5,000 on a campaign or a program or, or a paid media influencer, you know, what sort of the, the payback analysis that we could sort of tie to that? And I'm pretty sure there are tools that readily provides that. I think if we had that information in the future, that it would make it a little more clear that this is a good spend of a dollar.
All right. Alderman Veramus?
I just have one comment. I appreciate all that goes into social media. I think people think it's easy, and it's certainly anything but, and to try to keep up to speed with everything and stay on the cutting edge of everything. I really appreciate that. I just want to be cognizant about the people that don't use social media, the seniors that are in our community. I know, I'm going to say one particular that lives across the street, my mother, that does not like technology. So, I appreciate some of the updates I've been seeing in the water bills. I think that you've had a special addition in the front porch specifically to senior services. So, I would say, please, let's not lose sight of that and be cognizant of those that do not use social media and technology like so many of us do. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Nardini, did you think TikTok was a breath mint, or do you know what it is?
I'm not going to get into Chinese propaganda on the dais of Elmhurst City Council.
All right. We'll move on then to number twenty-three. Alderman Bram requests a circle back on the North York TIF, TIF four, in light of an open referral.
I guess this is the whole chicken and the egg thing, kind of already talked about it a little bit. I think that, I don't know what line item it would go under or how it would go, and I'll look for the recommendation of Director Coyle, but I would like to attempt to make a motion to add $150,000 to the TIF four budget in case the currently open referral does move forward. I don't know what line item that would be under, though.
You want to, Director Coyle, do you want to identify a line item that might be pertinent for that?
Mr. Mayor? Just a question. I mean, TIF, TIF is funded from the increment. Are you asking to...
Let's get a line in, we'll get a, see if there's a second.
Well, he's not making a motion. He's asking a question, or?
No, he made a motion. No, I have not made a motion yet.
I beg your pardon.
I was just, I guess I'm just trying to anticipate, like, we can't, we can't add money to a TIF. It's an increment that's created by the increase in the property taxes. But I guess maybe you're asking to move money, spend more monies than is anticipated for a certain year for an item, or, I guess I was just a little bit confused.
Correct.
Increasing a budget in a TIF.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond?
Please.
Yes, maybe my phrasing was incorrect. I am looking to, if this referral moves forward, to add an expense to the TIF, so we may be able to move forward with it in the same fiscal year.
And just to be clear, and so everybody knows, this is the referral pending on lighting the medians, the planters that are in...
Correct.
...street. And so, that would be page five dash ten with the account number 570 270, Other Public Improvements.
Thank you, City Manager. Line item, please.
570 270, Other Public Improvements.
Alderman Nardini?
Thanks. This is a, an ignorant question, but is, is the terminology correct to add money to the TIF, or would we be saying?
No. No, I misspoke. It was...
How, what, would that please either my mayor or my city manager or my finance director in a way that makes sense, add budget to an otherwise TIF-funded project?
We would increase that budget line item by 100 and...
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Thousand dollars.
Correct. Thank you.
I'm not going to do the math publicly. I want to use a...
I was told there was no math.
All right. Additional discussion. Alderman Bram?
So, I'd like to make a motion at this time on page five dash ten, line item 570 270, Other Public Improvements, to increase that budget line item. I think I'm saying it right. From the $3,031,000, add an additional 150,000, which would, I think, equate to $3,181,000.
All right. Is there a second on that? Alderman Bastido, second?
Sorry, go ahead.
Alderman Hill, second. All right. A discussion. Alderman Bastido?
All right. For the slow Alderman here, I'm making sure I understand this correctly. This is currently in front of Public Works. It is a project to increase the safety. I believe the referral was because there have been several accidents on the medians up there. So, the goal is to increase the safety. And you're saying if that came out of committee, was approved by council, there's currently no budget for it. So, we'd have to wait a full year for those safety measures to be taken. So, what you're proposing is that we go ahead and add $150,000, so that if that project passes, it still has to go through committee and through full council, that there would be funding for it.
Correct.
And, I'm sorry if I should know this, but where'd you come up with that dollar amount?
City staff provided that dollar amount as a initial first guess, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Director Coyle, the currently budgeted $3,031,000, do we have, it might be here and I didn't, what is the breakdown for that?
So, there's $30,000 just for special projects within the TIF. So, that project would apply to that if that, those dollars were not used elsewhere. There is $2.6 million for the North York Sidewalk Project, and then $443,000 for the Crestview Sidewalk.
And without speaking on the merits, do we usually, actually, I know the answer better than you, never mind. Additional discussion. Alderman Toledo?
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm not saying whether or not I'm in support of the referral, but just from a procedural perspective, there are examples of times where the city council, through a referral, comes up with a new idea during the course of a year that was not budgeted for, and that is resolved typically in the committee process. You know, if it's $150,000, it's 300, it's a half a million dollars. Through the committee process, there is discussion typically that addresses how those funds will be appropriated, if that means that there is a project that gets cut, or there's carryover, or something else isn't happening. You know, in July, we now know, you know, that some, the sidewalk portion isn't going to happen, so that can be, the safety thing can be funded by the other thing. All of my point to say, I'm not comfortable making split-second decisions on the dais for new things that are being considered by a committee. I'd rather see them go through the committee process. I have trust that the committee will, with staffs, help determine how best to fund that if it's not currently in the budget. I don't believe that because it's not in the budget doesn't mean that it won't get funded in that current year. Thank you.
Alderman Nardini?
I hear what Alderman Toledo is saying, and I absolutely agree that I am not comfortable supporting anything brought to me on the dais without any thought ahead of time or discussion ahead of time. However, this strikes me as exactly an analogous comparison to the engineering budgeting for the police station, and in that regard, I would support this.
City Treasurer, did you?
I kind of, I might agree with that, because we could use LOC proceeds to pay for this, as akin to using bond proceeds for the police station. I don't know.
There's available line of credit, yes. We could draw down, but it's just then additional line of credit we would have to pay back. Yes.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you.
And then Alderman Toledo. I mean, Alderman. Bastido, too.
So, to Alderman Toledo's point, I mean, we have over $3 million that are earmarked in the TIF to do something. I think if this is an important project, which it seems like it's safety-oriented, I think at TIF, there's limited dollars that are available to spend. So, I think it's just not as easy to increase that $3 million number to be 3.15 million. So, I think that if there's a need, and it's a high priority need, we redirect some of the $3 million that's currently earmarked in the budget and do it.
Alderman Bastido, then Alderman, then Alderman Jensen, then Alderman Nardini.
So, I would agree with Alderman Toledo that a lot of times that does happen, where there's projects that go over and money is found. But there have also been examples of important projects that are done for safety, like this one, that had to wait a year. And I think the recent example is some of the sidewalks on the north that still haven't been done yet, even though they were approved a while ago, and that's because there wasn't any money budgeted. So, I do, I am going to vote in favor of this amendment, because I think it's going to leave the option at least open. Like we said, this project hasn't been decided on its merits. It still has to finish the committee process and go to the full council, but this is giving the option to fund this if it is something that the council deems worthy. And again, I've seen projects that have been, that I think are very important and for public safety, that have been delayed because there wasn't money in the budget, and it wasn't so easy just to say we're going to move stuff around. We were told that we had to go through certain processes, and we're still waiting for them. So, I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Alderman Jensen?
Yeah, I'm still trying to process exactly how I want to handle this, because on the one hand, it is somewhat analogous to the police station, but that's also three and a half million dollars. Like, $150,000, we see every year that there are millions, a few million dollars of projects that don't happen because we can't get aggregate, or whatever it is, right? And if we do go through the process and decide this is a reasonable thing to do, I'm pretty convinced that we'll be able to find $150,000 to do it. One thing that concerns me about adding it specifically to the TIF is what if there's $150,000 in the general fund? Aren't we kind of tying this to the TIF? If there's not funds there, then we have to arrange it in a different way? Let's, or can we go through the committee process and redirect at that time?
I think, to me, like, the, I agree with that analysis. The police station has been, we've been talking about it for 10 years. This is something new, and I think, I think it's an important project. And I think, but we generally don't budget for things that we're just talking about, and they may or may not pass this one. I kind of get the feeling that people are concerned about it, but I agree that it's not a lot of money, and if it was a priority, whether it came out of grants, or TIF, or general fund, that there would be a way to do it. I just, I'm not really personally in favor. I might be in favor of the referral, what the result is, but I'm not in favor of moving, reallocating TIF money on something that might come along, but I understand the reasoning both ways. Alderman Bastido?
So, I mean, so then Alderman Jensen and Mayor, then tell me if I'm wrong, that, you know, an example of the sidewalks, Crestview and others, that were approved a year ago in March, and they still haven't happened because there wasn't budget for it. Am I, is that not analogous?
Alderman Brennan?
It wasn't so easy just to find.
So, actually, the, the report that was approved by council for those sidewalks, with the exception, well, so Crestview was supposed to come out of the TIF. Van Aken in Indiana, the report clearly stated upon the city finding grants for those sidewalks.
Right.
So, we're going above and beyond in finding, you know, the, the funds, you know, to do this. And I don't think all this, that, like, the, only the east-west streets are available for TIF. So, I don't think, I think Crestview's in this $3 million number. I don't think Van Aken in, but, but that's elsewhere in our budget.
That's correct.
Well, we have, we have identified some potential grant dollars that we might use for that. So, it's not that we're ignoring the sidewalks.
So, so, there's elsewhere in this budget where we've set aside sidewalk dollars for Van Aken in Indiana. So, we, we are making that a priority, because we, there weren't enough grant dollars to make that project happen. So, I'm of the opinion, if it's important to the council, we'll, we'll figure out where the, the money might come from. But, but now I'm looking at that, that $3 million number. I would have to, to go to the cab and, and understand it better, because it's only Crestview from a sidewalk perspective that makes up that $3 million number.
Majority of that $3 million number is the North York Sidewalk Project, which is a grant-funded project that we have. Yes.
I got you. Thank you. Alderman Bastido?
Yeah, and I, I don't agree that this has moved forward very quickly at all. Even if you're just looking at the Crestview part, I mean, it's still been a while. So, instead of going with the, I think if it's important, you know, it will come up with the money, because, again, I haven't, that has not been my experience, then I'm going to support the amendment. And it gives us the option. It's not guaranteeing money. It's not taking money away from anything else. It's giving the option. If this safety measure goes through committee, which, you know, it could be on track to do, that there will be funding there for the project in less than a year and a half. At this point, we'd be waiting about a year and a half if we don't put it in this budget.
Do we know what the increment's going to be? Is there, how much money we expect to have? Because we could put 500,000 more in, but if the TIF increment isn't going to be there, then...
So, the only increment that we know for certain is what we have for 2024. So, that's based off of what was received this tax year. We project a 5% increase in increment, which is above what I'll say our base growth is for a non-TIF area. A non-TIF area is usually around four. So, that's what's projected in, in the revenue increases for TIF four.
All right. Alderman Bram?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, in my 22 years up here, I've never made this request before. I mean, like I said, it's kind of like the chicken and the egg. But as we all sit up here, and we all know that any time that a referral does see the light of a recommendation, right, it always points to a budget line item. So, where that budget line item comes from, if it's the TIF, the general fund, or wherever, I don't know, and I don't know if the referral will even move forward. But what I would like to do, as Alderman Bastido pointed out, I mean, we've seen literally, not figuratively, literally a car on top of these landscape medians, because of what's been claimed, different reasons, but we've seen cars hitting these landscape meeting, medians. Knock on wood, that hasn't happened recently, but this is an intent to make sure that they're visible at night in rainy days and foggy days. And I think it is a safety issue, just from the number of accidents we've seen here. So, again, I've never made this request before, chicken and egg. I'm trying to get ahead of things, so we are able to point to a line item where it is budgeted. In regards to, I believe Alderman Brennan may have made the comment in regards to limited funds. I mean, what it shows at end of 2025 as proposed to date of $3.7 million. So, I think I'm on the right page. Correct me if I'm wrong. I just saw it looks that I'm wrong.
The balance at the end of 2025 is on page five dash eight, and so that is, at the end of '25, we're projected to be at $43,000 to the, the positive in the North...
That's a huge difference. So, yes, my apologies. I was on the wrong page. But I do understand the, the concern over doing something like this, and I don't want to call it precedence, but I would, I'm trying to do my best to make sure that if the referral goes forward, that we resolve what I consider a large safety issue in regards to these landscape medians.
Alderman Toledo, then Alderman Hill?
So, a comment and a procedure question. One, a comment. A vote against the motion does not mean that this project cannot move forward in 2025. Everyone should be clear on that. Secondly, procedurally, because I looked at the schedule... Secondly, procedurally, because I look at the schedule of revenues and the current planned expenditures as presented by staff, the fund balance for the TIF based on the planned expenditures, which without approving the motion of the extra 150, we're only left with $43,000 in real money. So if the motion is approved, we would be spending, deficit spending the TIF for that 2025. Or we can decline the motion, let it go through the referral process and find the 150 either because some other project came in lower than expected or a project wasn't done, whatever. So procedurally, like can we approve something that deficit spends a TIF, just on a very basic level?
Procedurally, yes, you could do that. As Treasurer Kern, you know, it's just, we can draw down the line of credit. That just does increase the debt that the TIF would owe, but procedurally, yes, you could.
So we can, do we have two, this is a follow-up. Do we have two options? We can, can choose to deficit spend it so that we would be, we would be approving, spending more than is available in cash and, and just carrying that forward and the general fund covers it? Or would we be approving it and knowing that we're using the line of credit to fund that?
So it would be dependent on what that amount would be if we really needed to draw down the line of credit where the general fund was with its own balances. So that would be situational. If it's, tends to be a smaller amount, we tend to just have the general fund float those dollars. But if it is a larger expense or if the general fund would not have the funds available for some reason, then we would draw on the line of credit for it.
Thank you.
Alderman, did you have your hand up? Alderman Hill and City Treasurer?
Just to make a comment, and I would support this amendment because I did notice, now to Alderman Toledo's point, I do agree that most times when we have a referral pending, I don't think, at least to me, many times there's an immediate need. I'm happy to wait through that budget process to have the project addressed. I can think of stormwater projects that work like that. But I think when we talk about things to Alderman Bastido's point that are sidewalks, which I consider safety-related since they're called out in our traffic studies report, I think there's an added urgency. And it, I did notice the delay in sidewalks there, and I think it's a safety issue. And I think it's, it's, it's good thinking to budget ahead to keep safety issues funded in advance. Not the same necessarily with other things we may put in referrals for, but in this case, as a safety issue, I would support it.
City Treasurer?
I was going to say reborrowing from other funds. I believe TIF's five and six are both currently borrowing from other funds while as TIF four is not. This is as of 12/31/23. I'm not sure.
Correct. I believe just TIF six was, but there could have been a small amount for TIF five.
Is the 3.2.6 North York Sidewalk, 3.3 million special projects, whatever, it's potentially, it's conceivable that these amounts wouldn't be spent in that year?
Conceivably if the project did not move forward. So, you know, we do have the $30,000 of special projects in that line item. The North York Sidewalk, again, that is a grant-funded project, so you would see a revenue in the budget for that as well. So that's not completely, a completely TIF increment funded project. And then the other project in there is Crestview. And so just depending on when or those projects move forward, there could be something that does not, and then there would be additional dollars available.
Because sometimes we have these projects, they'll get done, but it may not be done next year and there will be extra funds even in that line. But all right, maybe we've covered everything. Anything else?
Mayor, just one last point.
Alderman Jensen?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, obviously I want to see this project move forward. I'm on the referral. I think it's a great project, so, you know, there is a safety concern up there. Just hesitant, like I'm pretty convinced that if the will of the council is to support this project, and we have 14 aldermen saying yes to this, that we'll be able to find that amount of money, whether it's in the TIF or in the general fund. You know, again, every year we go through a budget process and every year, you know, we look at the same chart where it shows that our revenue, you know, our fund balance is going deeply negative and every year that doesn't, you know, doesn't happen because projects are delayed and things like that. And I'm, I'm confident that our, our city staff will be able to find a way to make this project happen if the council approves it.
All right. Alderman Bastido?
Well, yeah, the will of the, of the council was also to approve the Crestview sidewalks. So it will happen. It's just going to happen maybe in a year and a half, maybe who knows when. So yeah, I agree, if it passed the city council, it's probably going to happen. I'm just, from experience, know that if it's not in the budget, it's not as likely.
Alderman Brennan?
So I disagree. I think that the Crestview was dependent upon funds being in the TIF. What Alderman Jensen said, and I agree with and I would support, is that this is potentially a safety issue, that if it truly is, 150,000 seems like an arbitrary number. I mean, I-
It was provided by staff. I mentioned that.
But still, okay, that's fine. I'm sorry. That wasn't a jab at you, Alderman Bram. But who knows what, what it really might be? I mean, if it's a referral, what's the engineering on it? I mean, they, putting in what, to me, on not being an engineer, seems like a simple thing. It's like, it's incredibly more complex than, you know, most, most projects are more complex than I, I make them out to be. But that said, if it's $150,000, I agree that we, I would support finding the dollars. I mean, the, the reason that Crestview is, is where it's at, there's engineering associated with it and TIF dollars need to free up to fund it. So I'm saying that this project, if deemed appropriate or important, we would find the dollars for it. All right. Anything new and interesting to say? All right, so the motion is to increase, lost my page here. The line item, too many sets of notes here.
I have it, Mr. Mayor.
570270. Right. By 100, by $201,000, is that correct?
Bum bum.
I've lost my page with that.
5-10.
5-10. Can you restate the motion while I look for it? All right. All right, so increase line 570270 from $3,310,000 to $3,181,000, increase of that by $150,000.
Correct.
All right, that's the motion. City Manager, I think we'll call the roll.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
No.
Burby absent, Deuter absent, Verimus?
No.
Hill?
Aye.
Shenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
No.
Bram?
Aye.
Cahill absent, Toledo?
No.
Park absent, Nudera?
No.
Levin?
Right to vote on this? I'm voting no.
That would be five aye, six nay.
Five aye, six nays. The motion's defeated. Anything else? And I will say, from my perspective, I, everyone on this dais is saying this is an important project, and everyone on the dais is saying we're concerned about public safety. And I think I've experienced this myself where if the will of the council says we're going to do it, we will do it. So you heard me say it, you heard everyone say it. If we have to find the money, we'll find it. I just think it's not the appropriate way to plan for it. So it's not, it's not a, Alderman Bram and Jensen, you have a good referral and we'll see where it goes. All right. We're all the way down to number 24. And what I'd like to ask the committee is, we have three left, so I'd like to like power on through. All right. So Alderman Brennan, number 24, please provide information on the business grant programs across all TIFs.
Thank you for the follow-up. Circle back. I'm good.
Questions on 24? 25, Alderman Hill, please provide budget and three-year actual results, 21 through 23, for the business grant program for all TIFs. Alderman Hill?
Thank you. So my question really is, how are we doing so far in 2024? I've seen the past performance. Just curious to see how we're doing so far in these TIFs. I'm sorry, I probably put you on the spot. How are we doing in business grants for 2024? I see the last three years, but I'd hope, I probably should have prepared that.
What is your question? How are we doing, meaning how much we're spending?
How much have we gotten business grant-wise in the three TIFs? Are we, let me give you a little bit of context. In TIF six last year, in 2023, had the most grants, business development grants that were awarded. We had a little bit in TIF four and very little in TIF five. So I just wonder what the trend is now for this year. I don't know if I need numbers, but has, is it still the same trend? Are we doing well?
Sure. I think I can go grant program by grant program. That might be the easiest way to do it and quickly give the numbers. And if there's any follow-up, please stop me in time. So for the sign grant, each TIF has $20,000 budgeted. So far in '24, each of the three TIFs have approximately $6,000 in requests. So 20,000 budget, 6,000 in requests. That's for sign grants. Moving on to retail grants, North York has $100,000 budgeted, Downtown has 100, and then Lake and Church has 50. It looks like the Downtown TIF has $80,000 out of their $100,000 budget in retail grant requests this year. Lake and Church is 30 out of their $50,000 budget. And then North York is $20,000 out of their $100,000 budget. So again, that's for retail grants. Sorry for the delay. Moving on to facade grants, Lake and Church has $150,000 budget. $90,000 has been requested so far this year, so that's been an active program. The Downtown TIF has 70,000 requested out of their $150,000 budget. And then North York, it looks like we, they have $150,000 budget. We've paid out 162 so far, and there's already people waiting in line for the remaining amount.
So there's more demand in TIF four than even, than exceeds our business grant budget?
It's TIF six, is it four or six?
Correct, for facade right now, yes. These numbers do go up and down year to year. It's, it's a little hard to forecast. That $150,000 budget, I think was an average placeholder as we saw the trends go up and down in all TIFs. Their staff has analyzed these numbers, and again, it's very difficult to predict what businesses are going to come forward year to year.
So I'm heartened by the, the grant awards in the TIF four, North York grant area. And I guess I want to say, I'm still a little confused why City Center gets some of those funds from the TIF, from TIF four. And that's, that's a, that's an, how has that agreement happened? It's an elective agreement between us, and that can be abolished at any time. And I'm not sure with TIF six traditionally getting a large number of these grants, I think it would be great to incentivize and improve the budget for TIF four, which I think is traditionally underperformed when I look at the past year's performance here in TIF four and TIF five. So I guess what I'm thinking out loud is, you know, should we be redirecting funds to places like City Center within the TIF when we already exceed the amount of funds we have available for business grants in that TIF? So we're over budget for retail grants, for instance. I'm just not sure of the value of providing those funds to City Center when we need development in the North York area.
So the, the account that we're over is TIF four?
Yes.
Not TIF six, where City Center?
Right.
Generally is.
But we pay, out of TIF four, we pay in the City Center for the amount of?
Very small amount, correct.
Yeah, very small amount. But I'm looking, and this is actually to the next circle back, which I will not need, Mayor, but if I can speak to it, I got City Center's budget. And their revenue exceeds their expenses about roughly the same amount. I know it's a small amount, but like, I'm just not sure if we still need to keep paying this out of TIF four. I think there's a value in reallocating those funds to TIF four instead of paying them to TIF six. Is there any reason you think we shouldn't do that? Is there an argument against that that I'm not thinking of?
Paying them from TIF four to City Center or to, you said TIF six. Do you mean City Center?
I'm sorry, TIF four to City Center, yes.
I think that's something that we would need to talk about with more depth than just trying to answer that right here. Everything that City Center does and what that means to their budget versus what, what happened with that money in, in either one of the TIFs.
Is this from 2013 or so?
Oh, I think it's probably prior to that.
Prior?
Yeah, it's since we've had the, the TIF and the SSA that overlap. Yeah, it has to do with.
But my recollection is this is a deal we made with them.
Correct.
With, yeah, I mean, it's, you make a deal to go forward and then, you know, I guess you could say we've changed our mind. The deal we made is no longer good, but this was the deal we made to get the TIF done.
Okay, I am.
I'm, it's, I think you're confusing it with the deal that we made with the school district. This, this has to do with just the way that the taxes come in and our commitment has been the way that it's taxed, that we would put that portion of the SSA.
I definitely remember the school district one. But I thought we had it, made it, had an arrangement with City Center that went all the way back to that time. If not?
I, I think it went prior to that. I think it's from, even in, maybe even the extension of the TIF or, or something like that. It's been in place for a long, long time.
Inception of the-
Well, I'm just bringing it up because I see it there and I wanted to highlight that. I know that all of us have nothing better to do but talk about this for a while, and I'm happy to keep talking up here. But no, I think, I think I'll bring it up later, but I am bringing it up now because I saw in the budget, I think there's a disparity there. I mean, if it was an old agreement, I think perhaps it should be discussed and reevaluated, but I'm not going to try to amend it to change it right now. Thank you.
I think that was.
I had the first and last.
All right. Well, what does that say? First and last. All right, so Alderman Bram?
Could I just ask one quick circle back?
Certainly.
In regards to what I thought we were talking about earlier today, but we were talking about the ped, bike and ped plan. The increase that I meant to highlight was in regards to Route 83 pedestrian bridge. So this year, it's budgeted, the majority of it's budgeted in 2026. Last year, it was budgeted in 2025.
Give a page, Alderman Bram, just for reference.
Yeah, it's cab 53. And last year's budgeted item out of the capital improvement fund was $714,000. Now, mind you, this year is budgeted in 2026, but the draw or the expense for the capital improvement fund went from that $714,000 to 1.389 million. Sorry, 1.3 million roughly. So almost doubled. I don't know if someone's here who can speak to that, but that's a significant increase from a draw, albeit two years out, for this one project. I was hoping just to get some clarity on why that is. And the grant itself seemed to stay the same, I think.
Kent's looking up last year's notes to try to answer your question tonight.
If not, we can take it offline. It was just my misstep earlier, thinking I'm talking to the Route 83 bike overpass when we were talking about the bike ped plan.
Well, let's take it offline then, and we will plan on having the budget ready to, let's see, next meeting is the 18th, no, this is the 18th, December 3rd.
Second.
Second, okay. So we'll see, we'll see the budget on December 2nd. I want to thank you all for your time and attention. It's a, they're long nights this time of year and some good questions, and I think we all learn a lot from what we've got going here by going through the budget in this detail and through this process. But all good things must come to an end. So Alderman Toledo, it looks like she wants to make a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Alderman Nudera. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.